All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. We... Are there any items on the preliminary items for next board meeting agenda that any of the commissioners like to discuss? All right, here now we're going to our first presentation, which will be the MARTA Q3 jurisdictional briefing, I'm sorry. Mr. Parker, good to see you.
I'd like to thank the commission for letting us come today. I've got a few other staff members here. Manjeet Ranu and Colleen Cairnham are with me, and then I know Roberta Abdul Salam and Katie Powers are watching virtually, and as is Rita Scott, our board chair, so thank you. Going to go through our agenda, I want to give a little update on our federal outlook, and how that's impacting some of, in a positive way impacting us. Update on the projects that we're delivering for the county, and talk through some key We've got a lot of things that are going on, so I'm excited to share them with you, but I think a real important piece and positive thing that's happening in the country is reauthorization of our surface transportation bill. The senate has passed a bill that one big impact will be, their version has about a 30% increase in formula funds. Another important change that Senator Warnock helped navigate in the senate version is an increase in the small starts program from $300 to $400 million, which is impactful for many of the projects that we have in front of us, including here in Clayton County, and increase in the federal chair from $100 million to $150 million. Numerous additional grant programs that will be administered at the secretary's level, and I think it's pretty obvious to us that our secretary of transportation is very positive around public transportation, so that's good. And then what we're anticipating is the houses said they will have a vote on the infrastructure bill at the end of this month, so we look forward to that vote and moving this bill into law. I want to give you an update on all the projects that we're advancing. First, talking a little bit about the bus shelter amendment program that we're advancing here in the county. The county will receive an additional 30 amendees by the end of this fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends at the end of June, so we're about quarter of the way through the fiscal year. We've got a whole lot of projects, as you can see, in the pipeline. We've installed, under this program, we've installed 38, and by the end of the year, we'll have about 68 amendees installed in the county, and you can see the dots here show where we're advancing these projects. This is just a example of one of the shelters that was installed very recently, and as you can see, it's a great addition to the amendees that we have with our bus system here in the county. One too far. The Phase Two of the Justice Center Transit Hub is advancing. We're continuing that work. The initial stages of the feasibility study are completed, including we've documented the existing conditions, as well as environmental screening. Our stakeholder outreach is underway. You may have recently been interviewed as county commissioners about the thoughts around this project to help us drive the types of amendees that we have, and we're currently working on the concept design, which will be followed by the 30% design, so this project's moving well. We're also committed to advancing here, this fiscal year, installing a breeze machine, so not waiting until Phase Two is completed, but getting a breeze vending machine. We've been working with the rec center, because we need data access, and so I think we've worked out an agreement so that we can install sooner than the completion of the Phase Two, that breeze machine. As I had said, the last time I was here, we were about to put in the new routes, and they are now in service. We did those in our April markup, and so these, as you know, really complete the vision of the initial tranche of bus routes in the county, and these two routes are designed to give us better east-west connectivity, so those are in operation. We do have some minor adjustments that we do need to make, and we're doing some public hearing, hearings now, and it's largely to do with just some tweaks to the service because of the overlap of the service of the 197 and 198 going into effect. And we're also having a public hearing, we're having a public hearing at the Flint River Community Center on 9/14, and that will ultimately allow us to make those service changes in the future that we'll bring to the board. We continue to advance the O&M facility. It's well into the negotiations on the real estate. The large parcel is still in the negotiations, and we're moving to what we call administrative negotiations, and if we're not successful there, we'll work with Forest Park, and they've been very supportive of the efforts to condemn the property. And the smaller parcel is much closer to terms, and we believe that we can get to a friendly purchase of that property, so that's moving forward, and we are on schedule to have that fully operational by 2026, which is what we've committed to in the 15th amendment. Update on the Riverdale BRT status. Project, we're continuing to advance that. We're working through the environmental process now, and that's going well. Here's a layout of that route. Here's the timeline. We're here in the planning phase. We plan on entering the, what we call the Small Starts Pipeline sometime this year, and that's when we will notify the FTA that we intend to go after federal funds, and at that point in time, all of the expenses would become eligible for reimbursement. Doing some little minor refinement to the alignment. We have, we'll be presenting the locally preferred alternative to the public and partners, and then eventually to the Board of Directors for their adoption, and this will all happen by the end of county year 2021, so that's moving forward well. We've had a lot of outreach around the commuter rail project, making sure that both the county commission and the cities along the corridor understand the impacts, and you know, we've identified significant impacts that we've discussed with the county commissioners and almost all the mayors. We will be scheduling a meeting with the delegation, the federal delegation, to make sure they're aware of the impacts. And I think, you know, I think it's safe to say, as we've articulated to all of you, that without the ability to share the existing railroad with the railroad, the impacts to building that project are immense and really make the project difficult to deliver, so we'll be, you know, continuing to roll that out and working with stakeholders there. We just released the look, some potential exterior graphics. We're asking the public to vote on sort of look and feel the exterior of the car. This was just recently laid out in our board meeting last week, and we're at the point where we're getting some public input into what the car should look like. We're asking the public to weigh in through October 9. And then finally, just want to talk about some partnerships that we've been advancing with the county, supporting each other. We were involved in the back-to-school events at the end of July, the making sure that we're helping to support with backpacks. MARTA can contribute to the Flint River Community Center, the artwork there through our Artbound Program. And then another, I know, an important issue that we're sort of beginning to lay out, and we'll have some more outreach with partners like the county. And the commission is starting a Safe Routes to Transit Program that Manjeet will be leading. We recognize clearly the need to just simply make our access to our transit stations safer, and we clearly can't do it alone. We need partners like the county and GDOT, so we'll be rolling out a program to really make sure, as we've talked about, make sure that the actions of everyone are aimed at improving the access to the corridors, and we recognize, you know, particularly the impact of fatalities along the corridors here in Clayton County. And finally, we had a great event that Commissioner Franklin joined us at, our Artbound Program, where we were recognizing the work of one of, some of the outreach that's being done with our homeless population through our MARTA Hope Program, and we had a social worker who is also an artist draw sketches of some of the homeless people who frequent our stations, and we've displayed those within five points, really just to bring awareness to not only homelessness and the issues surrounding homelessness, but also just bringing a personal connection that people can make to, you know, recognize the innate humanness that we need to recognize with our homeless population, and thank you to the commissioner for joining us. So with that, we'll turn it back to the commission chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker, for your presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Parker in reference to his presentation?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for your Artbound Program, because as we know, that's the way that we continually connect through historical perspective of our communities. But I do have a couple of questions. What is the expected timeline of the alternative high-capacity, as you stated? Because I know in the presentations you had one date, but then there was a different date, and I never got clarity on that from that meeting.
Yeah, I don't know, Manjeet, if you have any clarity on the timeline. You know, I think we've got to finish our outreach, which we will have done this fall. Make sure that we have consensus around that the impacts and, you know, the viability of the project as a corridor project for commuter rail is not what we'll be advancing, and then we will lay out a clear timeline to convert that to another mode, and we'll have to do another alternatives analysis, which will take probably about 12 months to 18 months to do.
Where's that consensus coming from? Where are you seeking that? That's very broad term.
Yeah, well, we've talked to, you know, all the commission members. We've talked to the mayors. I think we've got one mayor left up and down the corridor, and showed each of them the impacts within their cities of how a commuter rail corridor would impact them, and we've heard, I think, a consensus that those impacts are pretty sizable and not what, you know, they're looking for in terms of changing their community, the number of property acquisitions and widening of the highway and things like that, and impacts to historical landmarks.
Property acquisitions, is that something new to us, or is that something we do at the time that we pass the referendum? Well, no, you weren't there then.
Yeah, you know...
Is this something new?
Well, it's not new to this commission. I've been, you know, I think we've identified well over 100, you know, parcels of land that would be required, and we've, you know, we've showed that to you, and that was when, you know, the recent meeting that you had with staff, I know they showed you that, so we've been talking about these parcels for quite some time. I think the biggest point is that when Clayton County and with MARTA as a stakeholder, prior to the referendum, laid out the transit plan for Clayton County, I think there was a clear assumption that the railroad would have allowed us to run the commuter rail trains in the existing corridor using the existing rail, and that's just quite frankly not what they're willing to do with us. They see that they want to maintain the full capacity of their freight corridor, and all of these impacts come out of that fact.
So if we don't mind, let's go back to the timeline, because again, there's still two dates given, and I know that you all even submitted, you know, that project, proposed project through the ATL. So what is the expected timeline?
The first, the expected operational date would be 2026.
It is 2026, not 2024?
Correct.
Okay.
2027 was, I think, the second date, and so 2026 is the date.
So just for note, there, some time ago, there was proposed a guaranteed, I think, $100 million, which would have clearly helped you out with the first phase of what's being proposed, and so with that being stated, I think that money had to be spent down by 2026, but we chose not to move on that, so I think I just have to make a note to myself and have a deeper dive with you all on that, because, you know, a bird in a hand beats two in a bush when we're talking about applying for funding, as opposed to having guaranteed funding that we could have used for that project, unless I'm overlooking something.
Yeah, let me speak to that. There was, there was a action of the ATL Board that wanted to assign some specific funds to some specific projects, including this project, $100 million. When guidance came out with the ARP funds, because there were some layoffs...
I remember, thank you.
So we can only use that for operating funds?
Thank you.
But I want to assure you that whether or not we could have used those funds, or which we can't now, even if we could have, the timeline of the project is really being driven by the design, the construction effort, and so that timeline would have not increased or shortened the length to deliver the project. We are, we're, you know, we're certain, we have a high level of certainty that this project is going to compete very well with the, in the Small Starts Program, and that that will be favorable and that won't be an issue. And, you know, I'm certain that the board, we've talked about this with the board, the board is very, sees this as, the MARTA board sees this as an important project, and I'm certain that we want to make sure that the funding that we have available allows this project to go forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, Seth, for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
All right, next presentation will be Huey Nature Preserve presentation by the Clayton County Water Authority. Mr. Franks, I believe, is going to do the presentation.
And Mr. Chair, can I point a privilege a second? I see Mr. Mike out here, who's the one that was behind all of the great work with our great water authority, and then he moved on to allow Mr. Bernard to come in, so it's so good to see you come back.
Thank you.
Partners in credit.
Hopefully goodness, sir.
Mr. Franks, please.
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us this opportunity to come before you and present something that we're very excited about, investing, I say more and more, in Clayton County itself, and the water authority is very proud of serving the community, you know, over 26 million gallons a day of water, sewer, and our stormwater services as well, and we've always been a part of the recreational facilities here. We just want to enhance it, so. In looking at the presentation, you see here, we're proposing a recreational and educational amenity that we think would be unlike any other in the metro Atlanta region, which speaks more to the inner, I guess you can say more the recreational side. You look at the children there, they're at one of our facilities. Let me point this somewhere.
It's supposed to work.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, here's the Newman Wetlands Center that we're looking at here. This is an educational environment where you see birding, walking. We have about 20,000 visitors at this location, perhaps you are very familiar with that. The picture of Catherine you saw earlier with our youth, we have a young lady out there that does a significantly good job of educating our youth about the importance and value of nature, and that's a group of some of our youth from the community there at the Wetlands Center. This is just a walk through some of the entertainment, I'll say, recreation that we offer. Shamrock and Blaylock Reservoir, you're probably familiar with that as well. We've used that facility, the picture you see here, reservoir, which we pull our drinking water from, is a facility that people use for fishing, boating, and of course, we get about 17,000 visitors annually at these facilities here, including enjoying some fishing There's two pictures of our community use buildings. We thought that would be advantageous for you to see those. The Shamrock Community Use Building houses about 200 people comfortably, and then the other JW Smith is at our south end of the county there, houses about 50. These places are definitely used on a regular basis throughout the year, but mostly through the weekend. We're actually making some significant improvements to both of those facilities as well. This is time to give you a little bit of an overview of this Huey Nature Preserve, which spans about 4,000 acres, it's like 2.5 times bigger than the average Georgia State park. Proud to say that, to be coming here in Clayton County. We've had this area made good use of it through our years, however, we want to reuse it in a way that brings about recreation for our youth. The nature area zone you see there, you can see 1941 running north to south there, and then of course, the lakeside recreational zone. These are the zones that we'll kind of talk to you about. It's a convenient location, as I mentioned before, you can, we preserve, including CCWA's Newman Wetlands Center, which I showed you, and Shamrock and the Blaylock Facility, that's all included as part of this. Our vision is to create a new recreational opportunity while protecting the land and water quality in our CCWA's drinking water supply watershed. With that being said, revaluing the opportunity to be in nature, to be a part of the environment here. We have some beautiful property that we think everyone should get an opportunity to enjoy and appreciate. This is to give you a little bit of a walkthrough of how we proceeded with this plan, the Huey Nature Preserve vision and background. First, we had a feasibility study back in 2016. That was the start of it, and we did a detailed recreation master plan in 2017, and most importantly, we formed our 5013C in 2019, and with that, you have to do some fundraising, right? We wanted to see what the environment looks like for fundraising, and Mike will share with you a little bit more later on about the master plan. You can see our partnership there with Alexander Haas. That's our logo there with the Huey Foundation there, and along with the water authorities definitely completely behind this. And again, just to see a glimpse of some of our facilities. And a little small picture there moves to what we did in the community. We call it the heartbeat of our community is our youth, right? They want to pump life, love through the community, and will keep our community thriving and growing through the years, so we invested some time and energy in creating this vision with our elementary school kids, middle school kids, and high school kids, and this is just a rendition of one of their ideas. It was sort of like a treehouse, a learning environment, of course, is what we're trying to cultivate here in nature. Climbing towers, structures, slides, trails for walking, of course, all of it should be ADA accessible, individual swings that look like seed pods, so you're kind of mixing nature and recreation, just a great learning environment. We spent some time talking to our Clayton County Public Schools, they're very excited about it as well, and any opportunity that we can engage our youth and revalue recreation outside. Next picture shows work at hand, our young folks drawing what they think would be something they'd really like to see here in Clayton County. Our mindset is, why should our youth have to leave Clayton County to enjoy and appreciate some of the amenities that you can appreciate on the north side or somewhere else out of state? So that's what you're seeing, one of our vendors there working with our youth, helping them capitalize on what their thoughts and ideas and putting it on paper and creating what you seek. So with the fundraising feasibility finding, we use Alexander Haas to assess the interest. We're very excited to hear that those in the county were really enthused about the big idea of the Huey Nature Preserve. We know the Clayton County Water Authority has a strong reputation and a track record in the community, and that's something that we want to continue to enhance, want to continue to grow our relationship with the county, our immersing ourselves in the community and contributing to the community, so this is very, very exciting for us. We preserve, preserve all its important benefits of improved physical, mental, and health, you know, of course, getting out in nature, exercising, that learning more about our natural habitat here is important. You know, the COVID-19 has kind of driven more people outside, now they're a little bit more amped to be in that environment, plus it appears to be more safe, right? So environmental education, awareness is valued, public funding will need to lead efforts due to the post-pandemic. On the private sector, we had some difficulties gathering some speed with that due to the pandemic. We interviewed about 35 community leaders, I don't know, some of you may have had an opportunity to talk to Alexander Haas, but the outpouring of information and excitement about this project really brought a great deal of pride to me and to us personally here at Clayton County Water Authority. We're excited to push forward with this with some support. And with that being said, I'll let Mike engage our master plan.
Thank you, Bernard. It's good to be here with you again. It's been a while, but it's good to see you folks, and I appreciate the time you've given us today. We put together a master plan for this property, and what excites me about this is, I spent a lot of time out here and driven all these roads, and you can be where the constructed wetlands are, and you feel like you're at the coast of Georgia, you see the same kind of birds, you can go in other parts of the site, and you feel like you're in the mountains of North Georgia, and you get everything in between, so it's really beautiful property, and so we really want our community to be able to benefit from that and to see it just like we do. So we've put together a recreation master plan with the help of some consultants. So this site area is about 500 acres. Again, it's as big as many state parks across the state. The top-left intersection is Freeman Road and Dixon Industrial Boulevard, so not far from our water plant that sits on 1941, and so this shows all the elements that we hope to eventually make part of this plan and available to our community. On the far right is the Wetlands Center that's already there today that a lot of our school kids enjoy, and people hike those trails now. This thing is sensitive, isn't it? One of the elements is just open space fields, so two open space fields of over 12 acres where people can enjoy all kinds of different activities, whether it's just picnicking with their family, you can have outdoor movies, food trucks, a lot of different community activities on those sites, they're very popular these days. Some exciting things is archery. Archery is getting more and more popular, there's a lot of college club teams that compete across the country, a lot of youth programs, but there's not a lot of places to do this. You know, axe throwing became popular, who would have thought that? So archery can be popular too. It also includes a competition disc golf course. What that means is playing golf with a frisbee, so you know, you lay out a little course and people try to throw the frisbee into a basket, another thing that's becoming very popular. We already have community residents boat hunting on part of this property. We understand Georgia Tech's looking for a place to do competition archery, so that we know there's a demand for these things. Another element that would go well with our school system is outdoor classroom space where kids can enjoy hands-on play with treehouses and building things, so we provide a bus drop-off in places that kids can learn more about science outdoors. This is one we're really excited about, too, is a group camping zone. On the property that we're looking at, there was an old Boy Scout camp called JK Orr. This is an African-American Boy Scout camp. They existed from the 40s through the 60s, and so we're going to use some of that same property to kind of recreate that, build a group camping spot for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. Very few of these amenities around the metro area. Our consultants have already talked to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, they're very excited about the potential for this. You can access it from Freeman Road, it would have obviously primitive camping areas, bathrooms... It would have obviously primitive camping areas, bathrooms, a place that Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts could go and camp. And part of it would be recreating an old obstacle course that actually existed as part of that original site. We've already had some success for this project. The reason I'm here today is I'm chairing the foundation board, and we've been working hard to try to get that momentum going. We've applied and received a grant from the state to build a parking lot that has green infrastructure. The parking lot would be used to access these facilities. The Water Authority has maintenance crews already on the site who are helping to start developing trails. And really exciting with the archery is the state has already promised to purchase the equipment needed for these facilities. And we really think they're also going to provide some grant funding for the archery fields themselves. So we're really excited about that. But right now, the urgency for us now is we're applying for a Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant of $3 million. The grant application is due October 15th. And we want to make that grant application score as well as possible. So having partners involved in that helps. We would apply this grant to that group camping area. But the support that we're looking for from our community partners is financial partners as well as letters of support. The good news is the school board has already committed to being a 1% partner or committing $30,000 to the project because they're really excited about the outdoor classroom ability and the ability to get their kids outdoors. So we had a meeting with the superintendent and he made that commitment. So we're really excited about that. Again, just thank you for your time. And you know, as Bernard said, when you think about Clayton County, you know, we want to see that we have the same kind of facilities they do in the rest of the metro area. And we think this would be something to really be proud of. So I'm going to turn it back over to Bernard to finish it.
Consider ourselves the best kept secret. Clayton County has a lot of potential. And we are looking forward to this opportunity, right along with other economic development opportunities here in Clayton County. So with that being said, what you were hearing about, you know, the investment in our youth, you know, there'll be something for our grandchildren, on and on. You know, I don't know what you know about yurks, even 5K, great spot for a 5K there. Chairman to run through nature. And when you look at this, you know, how can you help sort of right in line with what Mike was saying there? We, to approve this resolution to dedicate matching funds from Georgia Outdoor Steward Act grant modification, you know, provide a letter of support. I think we've already kind of sent that out to you. Drafted what that letter of support would look like. And you can see other funding possible that could be used. ARPA, SPOLO, et cetera, coming from the county side of things. And of course, it's our goal for you to share our vision. We know that we've always been collaborative, worked together, and we want to improve the county and grow the county as much as we possibly can. And so this is just a great opportunity. Very thankful for this chance to stand before you. Very proud to be a part of Clayton County. Been here all of my life. So seeing these changes come about in Clayton County and making these improvements is really critical, critical to our area and bringing in people here. So again, thank you for your time. And hopefully you share our vision in reference to supporting the Huey Nature Preserve. Any other questions for us?
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Franks or Thomas? But I will correct you on one thing. You said you're the best kept secret. There's no secret about how great our Water Authority is. And I appreciate all the work that y'all have done in the past and continue to do in our community, especially centered around our youth. So thank you for bringing us this presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Franks?
Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Thank you for this presentation and all, this project and all. But I don't want you all to forget about the northern part of the county, north and east part of the county. I see everything is, you know, below a certain line and all. So if you all in the future, you know, with your projects and your economic development and all the growth, if you would, you know, consider, you know, whatever, what's going on or something to go on as far as the economic development and all is concerned for the north and eastern part of the county.
Most of our land is south. That's probably why we focus our attention.
Well, you all need to get some land.
We have to be permissioned by, but yes, yes, ma'am.
Look, we pay water bills and all too.
So did I hear you correctly? It takes us to give you permission to buy it or the board?
The board.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see it spread out.
Yes, ma'am. We've got a few things coming up that I think you all appreciate and that we solicit the county when it comes to our tanks. That's another opportunity to advertise our great county. When I say best kept secret, I say Clayton County as a whole. We're one together, so.
Just to, I'll wait. Have a statement, please.
Commissioner Frank.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Hambrik stated, I think that is a great opportunity. And similar to the comments that were made previously, I would like to lend a suggestion that there is a piece of property over in that Mountain View area that it probably would be a great idea to have a nature focused on one part of it. Because as you stated, the pandemic is not going anywhere, whether it's going to be COVID-19, 20, 21, no matter what. I believe that what we're doing is we're having to recreate our sense of normalcy. And so there are a lot of folks that are getting off planes that don't just want to go shop and spend money, but are looking for places to hike. So maybe that's something we can look at in that plan that's been presented. There'd be an opportunity for that. But on top of that, I do want to definitely give kudos once again to the fact that you involve the youth because it is key and paramount to us to be able to build upon those and build sustainability in our communities. And at some point, we may end up with only outdoor classrooms. Hopefully, we can remain indoors. But I'm excited about the plans. I'm excited about the opportunities. And I just recently had a conversation with someone out of Senator Ossoff's office, and they were bringing to my attention about additional funding. So I'll definitely connect you to that contact just to make sure that we're all on the same page and there's no additional funding that they were trying to meet with me regarding. So I'll make that happen for us.
Any other questions?
I do. Did you say that property is 500 acres over there?
Yes.
500 acres. If we would develop this part of the master plan, the Water Authority owns over 4,000.
Oh, wow, okay. And the plan for it as far as the preserve? Uh-oh, about to get, did I say something wrong? I think Commissioner Hambrik is upset. What, is there a timeline for getting this project started?
A lot of that depends on funding. We already have started personally, you know, from our own perspective, investing in clearing land and replanting land and then just planting. As I mentioned before, I might not have mentioned a part about the camping. Might mention that, but we're also looking at adding some yurks, you know? So we're fully invested, you know? So we're going to continue to, no matter what we get on the other end from others, we're going to invest to do it, do it ourselves.
The group camping depends on that funding from the grant, which they would make the decision early next year. Then you go through some additional planning. Construction could start by the end of next year.
Okay. Yes, I was just suggesting if we can get periodic updates on that because I think, like you say, this is a fantastic project.
Yes, are you all asking us for assistance or?
You missed that part.
I missed that. I was so involved in the northern part of the county. I forgot that.
That partnership I needed, that Mike might have emphasized a little bit more. It's that percentage that was mentioned on the other page here.
Right.
That 1% match.
The real value of that is getting the grant approved. The grant would be a 75% grant. So out of that $3 million, about $2.5 million would come from the state. And they give you points for getting funding from other community departments.
Would you need those points before the grant?
By October 14th, we would need a resolution. We wouldn't need the funds until the grant is approved and in our hands.
I have one more question. With the vast plans that are being proposed, it's just putting me in a mindset of linear for some reason. Is within the 500 acres that's being proposed to be developed and the 4,000, is there opportunity for there to be a lodge possibly built by a third party later on down the road?
With all the land that's there, there's opportunities. There's some benefit on the recreational side of that, similar to what we have Shamrock Blaylock Facility. The J.W. Smith looks like a lodge. But yes, ma'am, the potential there is endless based on water and sewer.
So there's a P, you all are open to a P3 option once we get past this phase. We're getting ready to really become the destination of Georgia. This is great.
We're excited.
Okay, Chairman.
Commissioner.
Is there, or can we begin to put forth some type of support letter in the form of a resolution that we can begin to support this outreach from the Water Authority?
Yeah, I think there's excitement on this board in reference to this project. So if they need a letter by October 14th, we definitely can have something drawn up and present it the first meeting in October for the board's approval. Any other questions? Thank you both for your presentation. And yes, y'all are getting us excited, so appreciate you. All right, next up will be a presentation for our American Rescue Plan Funding Request from Ms. Charlotte Dupre, CEO, Southern Regional.
Thank you, Chairman Turner, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And also I want to thank you very, very much for the monies that you have in fact approved for us from the, this act. I think it's very, very important. Now you'll see that Southern Regional has experienced major staffing issues, shortages. They continue. We've had six respiratory therapists quit in the last two weeks before we can roll out the monies that we did get. The latest surge is a very threatening surge to everybody's health. And so it's deadly. We've had more deaths per day than we've ever had in the past. When you look at per day, the deaths in our facility based on the COVID-19, the Delta variant, and it's attacking our community and others. So I thank y'all again for helping us how you have. The latest surge has though caused a major competitive situation in our community. And so, especially with agencies. And so we've been talking, I have been talking personally to Ryan Locke, who is the Deputy Commissioner for the DCH, and to Kathleen Toomey, Dr. Toomey, who is the president, the director for the DPH, about what they can do to help us. We've implemented numerous pay practices, so I want to let you know what we have done as Prime. That's the wrong one. All right. I want to use this, my second slide. Anybody can help me here. All right. So what I want to tell you what Prime Southern Regional has done to help us with our pay practices this year prior to getting any monies from the county. We were forced to hire agency. The rates have continued to climb. They started off where our normal average per nurse is $35 an hour, $40 an hour. The agency costs $65 an hour. Now, when I did this presentation, it was $165 an hour. Critical care, they just went up to $185 an hour. It's just something that we can't even imagine that this is happening. And I've had my conversations with both Dr. Toomey and Ryan Locke about this, that the governor needs to do something. And Texas did something that they stopped the agencies. The only way the agencies could recruit would be if they use those people outside the state. In other words, if somebody wanted to work at the agency, then they'd have to go to another state. So I pleaded with them to try to get to the governor to enforce that type of program here because this has become just wild, just wild. We've given specialty dips for our RNs and clinical licensed technical staff of an extra $5 an hour and $3 an hour respectively. This is for our emergency department, our ICU, cath lab, and our operating room. Pandemic pay, if they take care of COVID-plus patients, then in fact they get extra $20 per hour. Or they could choose crises pay. And that is an extra $50 per hour for clinical professionals who will pick up an extra shift in order to fill the vacancies that we do have. And seasonal contracts for PRN people. These are people who have been here just less than 32 hours of pay period. And they've come just as they want to do work their schedules. But if they go full-time, we will pay them $75 an hour for the emergency department and $85 an hour for critical care. All these new pay practices have increased our average hourly rate for about $10, approximately 10%, and impact our labor expense at $400,000 monthly. And that's without the cost of the agency. The agency's costing us an additional $480,000 a month. So when you look at that 800 and we're looking at $7 million added expense has been borne by Southern Regional Medical Center thus far through August, from January through August. Go next. What we've done with the monies that you've supplied us, we received 1.766 million from the county for recruitment and retention bonuses for the staff because so many people were leaving. And we just rolled this out this past week. And thank you again very much. It was exciting that I personally met with 26, the third bullet down there, bonuses for our directors and managers. If you don't have the leadership in place, that is very hard to recruit your staff. And he had some dynamic leaders. So nothing made me happier than to meet with individually these 26 people. We did recruitment bonuses of $15,000 for any RN who signed on for a two-year commitment. We had 10 people of the 21 who applied, who took advantage of that and signed for a two-year commitment. The other 11 did not sign, but they did in fact come on staff. But it means probably short time, so we'll see how that goes. Retention bonuses up to $10,000 for our existing RNs and $5,000 for licensed clinical technicians, which could be your OB techs, your OR techs, and your LPNs and your cath lab techs, which are 206 employees. And I mentioned the 26 directors and managers. And retention bonuses for frontline, non-clinical staff, unlicensed support staff of 365 employees. We still have 203 vacancies. But our retention bonuses so far, we've spent $800,000 for bonuses and recruitment of 10 RNs in addition to that. We've taken other avenues of funding. We want to be very aggressive in how we pursue this. So we've met with the state. We put in our numbers. We asked for 59 nurses from them. We got zero. I know that you saw the news, how the governor was talking about the $12.5 million he was going to supply the hospital with all the new nurses that he was going to supply, all the respiratory therapists. This county got zero. And so they've heard from me. The governor's tired of hearing my name. I can tell you, I've used my lobbyist, Ryan Luke, and also Dr. Toomey. Dr. Toomey called me first thing Monday morning after us talking Friday night. Did you get any, did you get any nurses? I said, no, ma'am, zero. So they know loud and clear. Today, Ryan Locke called, we talked, he said, there are no more nurses for you. We don't have them. He said, I've never been as stressed as I've been now, but I don't have any more staff for you. We submitted a total of six federal grants to Senator Warnock and Senator Ossoff. I don't know if you're aware of this, but Senator Warnock made a surprise visit to our hospital. And so fast, in fact, we only had a half-day notice and was able to contact some members. Commissioner, Chairman Turner attended. And I didn't even, I wasn't even able to tell my board of directors because I was anxious to get my doctors there because I think he needed to hear from our doctors, physicians, and what was going on in our community. And so he said we have to do something for this hospital. So we put in four grants that included our Phase 2, which we presented to you, which was the COVID unit on the sixth floor and to include staffing. So we'll see how that comes, what comes of that. We won't know till November, and that would not be implemented until January, if in fact, or even starting until January, get to get those monies. In fact, I've talked to his liaison almost weekly, Andrew Eaton, and they don't know what money they're going to get. They don't know what they're going to do with it when they do get it. So I was glad to hear that somebody's been contacted saying they may have some money for them. And also Senator Ossoff's office, we kept in contact with them. We continue to research as many avenues as we can. We hired three grant writers. Most of the grants that are out there for hospital, healthcare, or for capital. So we applied for as many things as we could, for women's services, for education for women, for education about, for new mothers, how to care for themselves so that we have healthy births. We wanted to make sure that, we looked at our Level 3 Trauma Center, so put monies in for that Level 3 Trauma Center. And we've, of course, put in for more staff. However, everything that we put in, we did put the capital, add staff to it, but all this was for capital. So it will not include operational expenses such as salaries and wages, except for that COVID unit. There was in fact operational money and staffing in case that gets approved. But that staff would be for the COVID unit in the future. So I'm here to ask for reconsideration of our initial request that we need to request an additional $1.95 million to subsidize the increase in labor caused by this pandemic. We have, agency expense is going to be $3 million more than last year. But more- But more than anything is the premium pay for the pandemic, the crises, the overtime is projected to be $3 million this year instead of 1.8 million. So I'm here to request some help. My charge for Prime has been stay in the black. We just want to break even. We're not going to be making a lot of money. The monies that we got last year for COVID, for the CARES Act, went to replace the debt revenue. And that did not in fact go for any operational expenses. It just matched our debt revenue from what we were in 2019. So we had added expenses, which didn't help because of all the overtime, because of the added agency that we've had. So our bottom line continues to decrease. A couple of months, we've gone in the red, but years of date, we're staying in the black, and we need to stay in the black. So I thank you again for what you have offered us, but I do have a request for more help.
How many nurses are you short?
We're short 98 nurses. I've requested 59 when they, in fact, we thought we'd go something reasonable, 59 at the time, but we're short 98 nurses.
And how many COVID beds are vacant?
We have 40 beds unit, which right now, we have 37 COVID patients in. And then we have ICU, which is 10 beds that have vents. We're staffed, what I say, we have a 17-bed unit. We're staffed only for 10 beds. Sometimes we're staffed only for six beds. So we keep our, we hold our patients downstairs, the ED, and we don't want to do that. That really stresses our ED nurses out, to watch ICU patients as well as their own patients and respond to codes. But the pulmonologists, the intensives upstairs on the unit, do not want more than 10 beds open, because they know the nurses can't handle it. These are very sick patients who are prone, most of them are prone, and they're all on vents. So it's very critical up there.
Other questions for Mr. Frank?
Well, thank you for this.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
Okay. With the state and all, are they going to revisit the nurses' situation or funding or anything for the county?
No. I was told there was no, nothing there. Now, you saw, that came out yesterday, there's $25 billion that the feds are going to put out there. Again, that would go for CARES money, which would go for replacing that revenue in all the hospitals throughout the nation, like they did before. It does not go for expenses like we have.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. First, I haven't had an opportunity to publicly thank you for saving, well, for the great job that you all did several months ago, when I came over to your hospital and I saw that there was a little baby that you all were able to deliver. I got nothing but rave reviews about that. And I know that I saw the caring concern in your nurses. And you've got definitely a phenomenal nursing staff over there. So first, thank you for that, and thank you for your staff. And, but I do want to ask you a question. Go back to the other slide, if you don't mind, where you were able to give out the funds. I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly.
The next one.
Where did that 800 bonuses go, again?
The 800 bonuses went to all the, all the people you'll see there. It went to the non-clinical frontline, EBS.
Okay.
We went with the housekeepers. We did bonuses for security. We did every staff member. Every staff member who's not listed as a clinical member or a technical licensed member got bonuses.
Okay, good to hear.
Actually, they're going to get them October 4th.
They're going to get them to 4th?
Yes.
And, but you were only able to bonus 10 nurses?
That's so far, recruitment. We have more in the queue.
For recruitment, yeah.
We have more in the queue, that's for recruitment. And the retention is, we paid $10,000 for RNs and $5,000 for licensed clinical technicians, and that was for them to sign for one year. But we went ahead and paid them $5,000 right now, then $2,500 at Christmas, and then at the end of the year, we'll pay them another $2,500.
Of that, we know that the non-clinical staff are usually folks that are here. But of your nurses that, and medical professionals you have on staff currently, do you, how many are in-state, and do you have any that are coming from out-of-state currently?
I have some people who have moved to Atlanta who are here, but I'd say 60% or more from Georgia.
So you've been using, you, as a hospital, have been using local?
Oh, yes.
Folks, as opposed to many other hospitals that may have been awarded?
Yes.
The nurses, a lot of those folks are coming from out-of-state?
Yes.
Okay. And has that been conveyed as well to maybe our?
Oh, yes.
Delegation and everybody?
I asked for it to be elevated, that fact that it'd be out-of-state, that people would come. Everybody would come in. We try to get nurses in from out-of-state. So we do as much as we can to get, we have recruiters out there, we have agencies contracted with agencies nationwide. But in general, people are from Georgia who are working agencies. The six RTs, that respiratory therapists who just left, are going to live in their same houses and just work at another hospital and get paid $140 an hour.
Wow. Okay. Thank you so very much for that. I do need to talk to you offline about a concern that I emailed you about. I do know that I've been still getting some concerns about billing with the hospital, and I'm sure we can work through that.
Yes.
But there have been some citizens that are concerned about billing and proper billing and, and the level of communication with your administrative staff. But we can discuss that offline. Thank you.
You.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Yes. Is there any additional assistance that the governor has speaking about, even with the National Guard, as far as assisting with hospitals and hospitalization?
Not that I'm aware of. We've kept, kept on top of this, and Ryan Locke is his firsthand person that he relies on to be developing things. I did, I am on the advisory board for the Communication Center, Georgia Communication Center for the EMS, as is Dr. Ready, Suter Ready, with Clayton County. And we were told, we had an emergency call meeting this morning at 8 o'clock, Teams meeting, and they told us the governor had given them $4.5 million. So I immediately started texting. Everybody saying, where is the governor getting this money, when he just told me they had zero money? So, and, so they're looking at telemedicine. So again, it may be capital. Or when you look at some of these, it's a lot, they look at funding for infrastructure. They look for any type of IT funding, a lot of, a lot of that, but not staff.
Okay. Thank you.
One other question. On, you said that we didn't receive any funding. On average, how many beds are in those other facilities versus our facility for COVID patients?
Oh, Piedmont Henry probably has double the beds that we have. We're licensed for 300. We're staffed for about 130 right now.
130, but where did I get the 17 from? 17 and 10. You talked about number of staffed beds for COVID.
I said, in the ICU.
ICU, okay.
In the ICU, we have a 17-bed ICU.
Okay.
The first ICU. We have a second ICU, which has another 17 beds.
Okay.
So if, we call it our intermediate medical step-down unit. But I am not staffed for that unit, and I'm only staffed for 10 beds in the, in the ICU.
So with additional staff?
So the additional staffing, I could do 17 beds. I could actually do 34 beds.
34, okay.
Commissioner.
Yes. I know you've mentioned the nurses and staffing for the nurses and all. How are you staffed as far as doctors concerned?
I don't have, I have plenty of ED doctors. I have anesthesiologists, I have CRAs, I have, we've hired another primary care doctor. I don't have any gaps that, nobody's left, in other words, that I've had, except my breast surgeon. And she was post-op woman, needs to be from Northside Hospital. So Skip and I had some conversations about that, but still, she'll still be in the midtown area, which is unfortunate, to the south.
Are there any other questions?
I've just hired another general surgeon and another orthopod.
Great. Well, listen, we really appreciate the work that you and your staff, and everybody at the medical center is doing to keep our community as well and safe as possible. There's a lot of work that has been going, going on, and it does take a community to work with each other.
You're just a little weary right now, tired, you know?
I can imagine.
We keep, we keep thinking we're getting better, and then the surge happens. So again, wear your mask.
Get vaccinated.
Wear your mask.
Go ahead and say it.
And get vaccinated.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the important thing. By fact, 99% of the patients in my hospital who have COVID are not vaccinated. We've had one or two who've been vaccinated but haven't stayed one day, just to be observed. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you for your presentation. All right, we will not be having a presentation on the Mountain View Project. It has been removed until a later date. So therefore, the next up will be the 2022 Benefit Year Retiree Medical Plan. Ms. Ambrose.
Well, first of all, good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Commissioners, as well as Clayton County citizens who may be present. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to make these two presentations this evening. And we'll start with the 2022 Benefit Renewals. And my presentation should be brief. The renewals are pretty straightforward this year. First of all, the agenda is to talk about the administrative changes, as well as the benefit renewal timeline and the proposed 2022 Benefit Renewals. We made some administrative changes last year to the 2021 Benefit Plan, and we are happy to say that those changes actually resulted in cost savings for PY 2020 of over $400,000. And on the next slide, we'll break that down. We made a lot of administrative changes in the way that we manage our formulary for the pharmacy part. So we did get a lot of rebates back that we contribute to that $400,000. The administrative changes that we are proposing for Benefit Year 2022, we had thought about and discussed a increase in our spousal surcharge. Our spousal surcharge is $50 per month, which is relatively low compared to the other municipalities. However, as COVID rages on, we have put that on hold, and at some point may bring it back before the board at a later time. We also want to reintroduce our biometric screenings. If you notice, we have a intent focus on wellness. We're doing a lot of different things with wellness. We're really ramping that up, because one of the main ways to reduce costs and to improve the quality of our employees' life is prevention as well as healthy living. We do want to bring back the biometric screenings. Also, we would like to propose a hybrid open enrollment strategy. There are two strategies you can take when it comes to open enrollment. The first one is a passive approach, and the second one is an active approach. For years at Clayton County, we have, I'm still on that one. For years, we have engaged an active approach for our employees. And the reason I favor that approach is because we want our employees to be partners in their benefits administration. An active approach actually, I don't want to say forces the employees, but it requires them to take a look at what they currently have, and to assess what it is they are going to be needing in the upcoming year, and they make their selections appropriately. However, despite all the proactive measures that we take during open enrollment, which includes robo-calls that our employees don't like, but they get them anyway, because we feel that that's important to constantly remind them that open enrollment is in effect. Also, we just bombard our employees with a lot of different emails and just different information, trying to encourage them to move forward and enroll. The proposed hybrid approach would be to roll over benefits that employees currently have in case they miss their open enrollment. The issue with that is that we have our flexible spending accounts. We also have our dependent care accounts and so forth. Our R S rule will say that we cannot roll over those type of accounts. They have to make an active selection each year. But we are looking at this hybrid approach to see how we can minimize employees actually not enrolling and then calling us on the tail end. When you talk about the savings, if you look on the slides, you'll see the plan year 2020. October 2020, we saved over $56,000. January '95, April $124,000, July $124, with a cumulative saving thus far for that plan year of over $400,000. If we continue as we are, we're looking at a projection of $534,000 for 2021, as well as 2022, $697,000. Plan changes for the 2021 Benefit Year, we did approve, what you all voted to approve, New York Life as the carrier for our life products, as well as our income continuation products. Their, New York Life also manages our employee assistance program. So we do have a robust employee assistance program for our employees. We also implemented a law enforcement officer life benefit. Plan changes for 2022, we are proposing a public safety life insurance benefit, and that will come before the board next week for you all's consideration. On Friday, I sent the board some information regarding this particular product, along with an Excel spreadsheet that laid out the different classifications that will be captured within that particular benefit. As I discussed last year, there's a lot of things that have to happen behind the scene once the board approves the benefits, benefits for the benefit, upcoming benefit year. On 9/21, which is next Tuesday, we will be making an official presentation to the Board of Commissioners for your consideration of the benefits for 2022. If you all approve, we will move forward with retiree open enrollment. That will happen October 1st through October the 10th. October 18th, through October 31st, we will have our active employee open enrollment. The last two dates that you see there, 11/12 and 11/19, HR, this is not a silo for us. Open enrollment impacts other departments here at the county, especially payroll. We have to get the correct information to payroll, as well as the company that handles our retiree benefits, so that they can make the proper deductions. So there is a strict timeline that we're hoping to follow to make sure that we have a successful open enrollment. Open enrollment support, as we normally do in human resources, we want to make sure that we're supporting our employees to get them enrolled, so we'll have a good outcome. We are extending our hours from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. We will be open on Saturdays from 8:00 to noon during the open, during the open enrollment period. There will be direct enrollment assistance provided by the HR department. We'll definitely keep social distancing in mind. We're going to utilize the HR computer layout that is located in the benefits department, and we won't be doing, but probably three people, three employees at a time. But a lot of the employees depend on the direct enrollment assistance that they get from HR during this time. 2022 Kaiser HMO, there is a proposed 7% increase due to their loss ratio. Kaiser had actually put a 16% increase on the table, and our broker was able to negotiate that down to 7%. But right now, Kaiser and our data, we've reviewed the data very closely. Kaiser does have a 108% loss ratio with Clayton County. So they are spending 8% of what, of what they're actually taking in. With Kaiser, we are recommending no plan changes. We want to continue our 72-28 contribution split. We have over 1,000 covered members in Kaiser. The proposed premium is 13.2 million. Clayton County costs at the 72% would be 9.5 million. I do want to say in regards to the loss ratio, that is why- I do want to say in regards to the loss ratio, that is why we're definitely ramping up our wellness activities. Because as I said before, one of the most critical factors is your claims experience. And within the Kaiser population, we had two very high-cost claimants. Now those high-cost claimants have since dropped off the plan, but they do see data that's emerging that suggests that we're going to continue to have some high-cost claimants. Twenty-two Anthem POS self-funded, there is good news here. There's a five, proposed five point nine percent decrease to the self-funded budget. There are no plan changes. We have nine hundred and fifty-nine covered members in this under the three plans that we offer with Anthem. We want to continue the seventy-two twenty-eight split. Proposed premium, eleven point nine million. County cost at seventy-two percent is eight point five million. Also, within your self-funded budget, you have your fixed cost. Stop-loss is a product that is critical to self-funded plans. We have a stop-loss deductible of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which means that once our high-cost claims hit one seventy-five, then we begin to be reimbursed for that, for those particular claims. The estimated cost of that is one point six million. Negotiations are still underway, but we will have a final number before the board meeting on the twenty-first. Our ASO fees, no increase there. That's fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. So the total self-funded budget is ten point six million dollars. The last product that we have renewing this year is our dental, Delta Dental. We have our dental PPO product. There's a rate reduction of eleven point four percent with a two-year rate guarantee. Within this coverage, we have two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine million, I mean, two, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine members. The annual premium there is one point four million. County cost at seventy-two, seventy-two percent is one million, fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. ASO, the annual renewal rate there is seventy-five thousand, nine hun, seventy-five thousand dollars, a little bit over seventy-five thousand. So the total PPO county cost is a little bit over one million, as reflected on the slide. Under Delta Dental, and this is one of our newer products, when I say newer, we implemented this product probably about three years ago to give the employees an option. So it's our dental HMO. There is no rate increase here, there's a two-year rate guarantee there as well. We only have two hundred and thirty-two members in this plan. Annual premium is seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. County cost at seventy-two percent is fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. So the sum of all of that, Kaiser came in at nine point five million. Anthem, the self-funded budget, ten point six million. Delta Dental, one point one million. So the total renewal is twenty-one million, or twenty-one point two million. What we don't have renewing this year is our vision. We're still in a three-year rate guarantee with the vision. Our life and income continuation products, they are not renewing and neither is the voluntary benefits. So that's all that I have there. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Ambrose?
Maybe I missed it. What's the ASO? You say the ASO fees?
Yes ma'am, the administrative service fees.
Okay.
And that's where they actually process the claims and a lot of other administrative work on our behalf, number of services and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation ma'am, and thank you and your staff for all that you're doing for our retirees as well as our employees. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman, and I have one more because this year we took the medical, the retiree medical. We took, we're doing that separately.
Okay.
So we have one more for the retirees. I just wanted to share with the board the retirements by the numbers. In twenty nineteen, we had sixty-four retirees. Twenty twenty, we had seventy-two. Twenty twenty-one thus far as of nine nine, we have thirty-three. There are fifty-four employees actually who have a twenty-five-year tenure. It was interesting to me that the longest-tenured employee we have here at Clayton County is thirty-four years. So she has been with us for thirty-four years. We have about eight hundred and two retirees on our plan, but overall, we do have more, but number is higher because there are few that may not elect to take our post-employment benefits, as well as some who may retire that has not, that have not met the vesting requirements to be a part of the post-employment benefits. But we do have a total of eight hundred and two retirees that are on our plan. And this, this one is very straightforward and I'd be very agree with this one as well. Aetna Medicare Advantage, we are retaining Aetna Medicare Advantage. The highlights of the plan, there are no plan changes, no premium increases. We are asking the board to continue with the seventy-two twenty-eight split. Within the plan year, this particular membership has increased by sixteen. There are a lot of enhancements that the human resources team is going to make sure that we know back and forth so that we can tell our, educate our retirees to make sure that they use these enhancements. We want them to maximize the benefits. We have under the enhancement of the Aetna Medicare Advantage, is the telehealth specialist visit, teledoc. There is non-emergency transportation and there is also meals after hospitalization. We have asked if we would be able to track the utilization of these enhancements and we should be able to track the utilization. It'll be interesting to me how many retirees are actually taking advantage of the meals after hospitalization of the non-emergency transportation and so forth. We definitely want to put a push on educating the retirees about these enhancements to know that they exist. Annual premium, we have four hundred and fifty-six members in the Aetna Medicare Advantage. The yearly premium is one point four million. The cost to the county is a little bit over one million. Cost to our retirees collectively is a little bit over four hundred and four thousand dollars. And now my, my CLO.
Can you go back to the last one please? I'm so sorry.
Yes.
I couldn't write fast enough. Probably should have waited for speed, but just need to get the data. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. I want to say that our CLO always say that we have to tell our own story. So I want to say publicly that we have one of the best retirement plans there is. We have our defined benefit plan, which is actually becoming a dinosaur. So I just want our employees to recognize the fact that we do have a wonderful benefit plan. So I just wanted to tell our story there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question in here please?
Commissioner Frank.
On all of these, what's interesting is you got four hundred and fifty-six members, but then the member, the premium is for individuals of two hundred and sixty-four. Are we going through the same process that we've always gone through to make sure that those are actual spouses or they're legal of age children that could still be on those plans? Because as we know, children with special needs can remain on those plans. So are we doing the same type of observations of those numbers?
In regards to, to, we are, one of the things that we are doing Commissioner is extensive audits because we don't want anyone on the plan, and I don't mean to say this in a negative way, but we don't want anybody on the plan who should not be on, on the plan. So we're engaging in different audits to make sure that only those who qualify for the plans actually are on the plan. So when you look at that four hundred and fifty-six members, it includes the employees, it includes the spouses, it includes any dependents that could be on the particular plan. But let me back up and say this too, because with, with the Medicare Advantage, you have to be in the, a certain age bracket to be within these particular plans. So if the retiree has a dependent, you will find that dependent on the Kaiser or either the Aetna, the Kaiser or the Anthem product that we have. So when we're talking about the four hundred and fifty-six members here, we're talking about the employee and their spouses who actually fit the criteria to be on the Aetna within the Medicare Advantage. You could have a retiree with a spouse who is not quite of age to be in this particular project, I mean, product. So that spouse would either stay with Kaiser or with Blue Cross Blue Shield until we can make the transition.
Thank you so much, I'm very clear on that. And, and the reason I'm getting to this is because even though the question has come up on this slide and helped me because I don't quite remember, but do we have a surcharge for spouses who are offered health insurance on their particular jobs as opposed to receiving insurance through us?
We do have, we do have our spouse's surcharge.
How much is it right now?
On the active side, right now it's fifty dollars per month. And that's, I want to piggyback off what the Commissioner said because claims data actually reflect that the spouses are utilizing the benefit at a higher cost than the employees are. So the spouses are actually driving the cost, which led to the discussion as to whether we wanted to increase it or not. But when it comes to the spousal surcharge, we are very low in comparison to other municipalities.
And let me make sure that I'm clear because I don't want what I'm asking to be misconstrued. If an employee has a spouse that either does not have a job, is not employed anywhere, self-employed, or their job does not offer benefits, the only thing, they would not be charged that, that surcharge at all. So I want to make sure everybody understands that.
Exactly.
This is one of the lowest. I will say this, we have to understand that insurance is designed for the employee and therefore, if we have employees who employ someplace else and they have insurance being offered to them, fifty dollars doesn't quite entice them to measure to see which one is going to be a better benefit for them. That's just something for us to consider in the future, just for consideration. And there are some folks I've seen in the market within even the last couple of years that will pay upwards of a little, quite a bit more because the savings, the cost savings is that much more than what's being offered by their employer. However, there are some that may have a better benefit with their employer and I'm not sure if we're assessing that. So I would like to do a deeper dive with that. I would like to look at those numbers and carve that out.
We definitely can get that to you. I, I do want to say that you, when you look at what the, what's happening in the industry, you do have a lot of employers who are saying, you know what, we're just not going to cover spouses. As the HR director, I do think.
I don't advise that though.
That's, that's a bit too much. But you do have some who are taking a very liberal approach and saying, we're just not going to cover spouses at all. But what I can say is that the spouses, the data clearly show that the spouses are the greatest utilizers of the benefit.
What I would suggest is maybe this board just do a survey. Next time I do the enrollment, actually put in the enrollment to ask the question. Don't put the, increase the charge this time around. But put in there, does your spouse currently have insurance offered someplace else? There's a specific line of questioning that this broker should be able to provide us with. We'll collect that particular data and that will allow us to be able to make a better informed decision as a board. Not this time around, I'm going to keep saying that, not this time around, but moving forward.
We can get it to you, we actually can get it to you Commissioner, because we are doing that to make sure that, we don't want the employees to say, well, I, 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 let me, let me rephrase this and be careful with how I say this. We are auditing that already and as a matter of fact, our internal audits department did an audit recently of the spouse's surcharge to see how we were managing it. Do we have anybody on the plan that does not, that shouldn't be on the plan?
How are you doing it now?
So we should be able, the process that we use is when an employee comes in, a new employee, straight off the bat, there is a particular document that they have to provide back to us within a certain period of time that states whether, let me give an example. If you were, if you were a brand-new employee and you want to cover your spouse, we're going to provide a document to you to take to that. Well, first of all, you feel like the document and it asks you several questions. One of the questions is, do your, do your spouse work? Does your spouse offer, does your spouse employer offers health insurance? If the answer is yes, then we have that person, working out, that person, spouse, takes that document to his or her HR department, they verify what it is that they are doing. Do they have the, the insurance or not? Can, does this employee meet the criteria to be a part of your benefit plan? And then all of that comes back to HR. At one point, we were doing it on the honor system, but we changed that about, probably about two years ago to make sure that we don't have anybody covered under our plan who were covered, not necessarily covered under the plan, but who are receiving, who are not paying the surcharge and they should have been.
So you're only doing it for new employees?
Well, we start, we have to do it for new employees. We start out with the new employees because they're applying. Not only for new employees, as I said before, internal audits, just did an audit of our whole process. But I wanted to start at the beginning and that's how we get, how we get there. So a new employee comes in, if they want to cover their spouse, there's a document that they have to, that they have to complete for us to be able to say, okay, well, we need to charge a surcharge or not. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I'm clear on what you're saying.
It starts with the new employee, but no, it's not specifically for them. We have, we, the whole, the entire employee population has to provide that information.
Section one twenty-five requires the same thing to be applied to all employees. So we need to have a discussion.
What I'm saying is that it is applied, yeah, it is applied to all.
Not just new.
Yeah, I want, for the record though, I want to say that it is applied to all employees.
Okay.
When I mention new employees, I'm laying out the procedure to give the board an understanding of how the procedure works to ensure that we are properly charging the surcharge for the employees. So we can get that information that you requested to you because we already have it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's proceed on.
Okay. Um, let's see, where are we? Are you, thank you someone. Let's talk about Kaiser. Kaiser enhancement, they have some plan enhancements as well. Very excited about the last one you see in the table, the mail order copay, where the current copay is twenty dollars. But get this, if they order generic mail order, it's zero, zero copay. They also have added the specialty office copay. It went from twenty-five to twenty dollars. The urgent care copay went from thirty to twenty dollars. So there's a lot of good things that they, that they have enhanced with their product for the senior advantage. Also, this is a very interesting one that I'm very interested to see how it is utilized. They are giving their retired, their membership, I should say, a fifty-dollar quarterly over-the-counter credit where the retiree can use this fifty dollars to purchase health and wellness over-the-counter products. Once again, we want to make sure that our retirees are fully aware of all of these enhancements and to definitely maximize their benefit. There's also non-emergency medical transportation, eighteen one-way trips that they're offering and we definitely want to be able to, to monitor that just to see how well it's being utilized and definitely educate the retirees, I can't say that enough, so that they can maximize. Under Kaiser, we have three hundred and forty-six members, which will include the employee and the spouses that fit the criteria for the senior advantage. The yearly premium is a little bit over one million. Cost to the county would be seven hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Cost to the retirees collectively would be two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, a little bit over that. So the sum of the retiree piece, Aetna, a little bit over a hundred, over a million. Kaiser, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, a little bit north of that. Total retiree, one point seven million dollars. And I want to kind of slip something in very, very briefly. I have someone here that I would like to introduce the board to, Mr. Todd Ford. He's with Executive Retirement Solutions. He has a product, I've met Mr. Ford, he has a product that he's going to be presenting to the board at the work session on September the twenty-eighth. But I just wanted the board to meet Mr. Ford. The mission is to help individuals, families. Um, the mission is to help individuals, families and business presu-, uh, pursue financial goals and when we hear the fact that most people are not, uh, ready for retirement, the majority of people, despite good planning, on some behalf, they're not, uh, still not ready. I did want to, thought that the board may find it interesting, uh, the product, but he's just going to introduce himself to the board and we'll have a product, he'll have the, uh, presentation on the twenty-eighth.
My name is Todd Ford, I'm glad to be here. I'm here from Los Angeles, I flew in, uh, got here Monday morning and I'm looking to either relocate here, I'm looking to do something different. And I've been in the retirement planning industry for over thirty years and it's a specialized program that most people are not familiar with, is retirement insurance. And, uh, LA County implemented it with, with our, with our company about ten years ago for their employees. Imagine a program of retirement insurance is similar to a, uh, pension plan, but the money is all tax-free. It had a definite component to it, so if a person having to die, uh, a definite bit, that tax-free goes to their area, uh, but you'll get a tax-free check the day you retire. And also it comes with what is called cash protection. So with this product, it comes with, if a person gets diagnosed with cancer, stroke or heart attack, they'll get an additional tax-free check for that. But the biggest benefit, I believe, that most people are not thinking about is it comes with long-term care. People are living longer than they'd ever thought before. The good old days are dropping dead and over, okay? See, back in the day, you didn't have to worry about retirement because you were going to drop dead, all right? So now you can drop dead, over a lot of firefighters in Los Angeles, you can drop dead and they will bring you back to life and you'll live another twenty more years. So, if a person's sixty, sixty-five, seventy years old and they qualify for long-term care, they'll get a check for, for the next four and a half years, two, three, four thousand dollars a month to pay for that, uh, nurse, to pay for that facility. So I'd be glad to come out and present this to you, it won't take long and it doesn't cost the county a dime. Insurance can be paid for everything, uh, the employee can contribute as much as they want to and then as far as the payroll deduction, everything like that, the, uh, insurance can be paid for that. So when I was looking at your presentations, it looks like the county's spending money on everything, some other things with Kaiser or whatever, our program doesn't cost you, cost you a dime. That's one of the things that LA County learned about the plan, the employees can participate in it and it doesn't cost LA County anything.
Where at your company based, Todd?
Um, based, uh, New York and, uh, Texas. And it's a company called National Life Group, uh, that's an insurance company, they've been around since eighteen forty-eight. I'm based off of Los Angeles temporarily, looks like I just put my house on the market, looks like I got an offer for it, so it looks like I'm gonna be moving here in the next sixty days.
So they're not licensed in Georgia as required?
Yeah, licensed in Georgia as well.
You are licensed in Georgia?
Yes, I am. I'm licensed in twenty states.
Okay.
I've been licensed in Georgia for fifteen years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, sounds like you've already did your presentation, Mr. Ford.
Yeah, right, well. Okay, but thank you.
It's a pleasure to meet you, sir.
Pleasure to meet you.
And that's it for, uh, once again, I appreciate everything that you all do for the community as well as our employees, so.
I have one more question. What is your?
Go ahead.
What is your vetting process before you bring things to us? Is there, um, because we have an entire team, uh, what is your vetting process before you bring things before the board? How do you determine it?
Now, can you be specific? Cause I'm a little confused about your question, so can you be specific, Commissioner?
Because what I, what I just heard that we're gonna have a presentation on is basically just long-term care with a little caveat to it. What is the vetting process to bring various plans before this board?
Well, generally what we do, and we do have a vetting process in place, and I think we've given the opportunity to speak to that, uh, generally what we do is we, uh, vet through our broker actually. Um, Chairman, you know, we had a situation with Ms. Fabian, but we didn't, I explained that to you, how we vet, uh, through our, um, broker on the insurance, on the insurance side, because we're getting, we get, we get sales pitches of, of, a lot from not only benefits, but from all other, uh, areas of HR as well. So we do, for the benefits, we do have a vetting process, uh, that we go through.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Ford's presentation to the board that he would be presenting on the twenty-eighth is for informational only, it's information that the board can either take or, or reject. Uh, I did meet with him and, uh, within the meeting, I found value in what he's offering and the board may see that entirely different, but as I've told the board before, being innovative and trying to look at different options for our employees, as the HR director, that's what I do. And of course, you all are the policymakers and can either, you know, accept or reject it, but we do have a vetting process in place, Commissioner, and generally our broker is involved and will look at it, uh, to determine, you know, if they think that is feasible or something that they should, that, you know, we should bring to the board.
Thank you so very much.
You're more than welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you again for your presentation.
No, thank you all, y'all have a lovely evening.
Splos Management update, Flint River Community Center, Mr. Hopkins.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Board, excited to be here this evening. Um, last week, we were asked to provide an update specific to the Flint River Community Center and how we've been managing it, so I asked Director Rogers to assist, to assist me this evening, um, there were some specific questions that we were asked, she's going to address the first three and then I'll come back and hopefully take us home so that we can go, uh, spend time with our families this evening, um, but I'm, uh, defer to Director Rogers to take the first couple of questions.
And, uh, since I hear conversation, let me go ahead and make the statement if I may, I'll wait.
Thank you.
I'm only dealing with this before the board because this is the portion that I see. Let me just make this statement to begin with. There are several buildings within our county that, um, are of great concern to me that were built and are still having issues. I don't just look at what's going on in the district in which I serve, but I compare it and I do a lot of research. So, um, this board may be, have to, may have to consider, based upon the research that I've done so far on this project, some next steps and we may want to look at those next steps with several other projects. We have to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars and when we have paid several companies money to oversee projects and then I get an email that the architectural design is flawed, we owe the citizens an explanation. We also need to look at our practice to make sure that it doesn't happen again and then we can mitigate the issue, not just in this building, but every project in this county. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay. Well, good evening, Commissioners, Chair, it's good to see you all again, it's been a while since I've been at this podium. Um, what I wanted to do is briefly address the, with the concerns and the questions that were in the email and so in order to do that, I wanted to give you a visual. You have the timeline and what we did is we put a timeline in for each part of the project. So there's three, there's three parts, meaning of course, we would have a project manager, which is Atlas, and that's the first information that was requested was when do we bring these contracts on board? So if you look, the first project is for Atlas and that the board approved that contract, um, five fifteen, uh, two thousand and fifteen, and you'll look at the original contract, uh, date and that's when we would have, Central Services issued the notice to proceed and then that contract ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. The next information is for the architect and design firm. This was issued through the master contract, so the board approved a master contract for architect and art engineering services back in two thousand and fifteen. Um, we put a war out, meaning that's a work authorization that goes to those individual pre-qualified A and E firms. We awarded this contract to, uh, it was actually Nelson at the time, well, they were Wakefield at the time, they're Nelson now. We awarded that contract in two thousand and seventeen, the original date, uh, we have the original amount. And I think, uh, Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, frankly, you wanted to kind of focus on the change amendment.
Just, just not, I love it, but yeah, just the change amendment.
So I did include that, there's other change amendments, but that was the main one that I included, was when we added the additional design for that additional five thousand square feet. Next is the contract, uh, total, this would have, would have increased. Next, you have when we actually did the NTP, basically start proceeding with that. The contract actually ended on four one, two thousand and twenty-one and you have your total contract amount. The next information is for the project number and this is for the contractor, this is Morgan. We did a bid for this, so it was a competitive process. The board approved that bid in two thousand and eighteen, the dates are there. The original contract is when it started, that's when Central Services would have collected all the documentation, bonds, everything and said, okay, let's start that project. We turned that project over at that time to the PM, it leaves Central Services and it goes to the PM. Next, you have, uh, the other dates and we have the contract original amount, this is the amount that was approved before any change orders was done. The next amount, and we only focused on the change order that pertained to the additional space. And so you will see that went to, that was actually approved and that went to the board. We issued the notice to proceed, eight twenty, two thousand and nineteen. I listed the new contract total for you, as well as the end date, along with the final contract amount. I think that addresses most of your questions, but if not, certainly let me know. Also, there was a question of when did the projects leave the Splos project manager and go to the county's internal project manager? We sent a letter out to all vendors, anyone that was under contract, uh, on December the ninth and notified them as of January the first, that everything would go over to building and maintenance. And that's our process, so I hope I addressed the questions for you.
Thank you so much, this is just what we needed.
And then also in the packet, I'm sorry, in the packet, I included the information for the amendment, so you have the scope of work that we gave for the A and E firm for the design and you also have the scope of work that we gave the vendor for the construction.
Thank you so much. So since the contract ended for Morgan?
Yes.
Are they still responsible at this time for the leaks?
There, there is a warranty on the project and then we also retain the, uh, the performance bonds. The performance bonds are good for a year after the project is completed.
Cause we knew there were leaks back when I asked the COO about the building curing, uh, sometime last year, uh, when the building was sitting open and there was a lot of work being done on the inside of the building and I was told that the building had to cure and so now, then a little bit later, we had several leaking issues. We had to mitigate the mold in a brand-new building. Once we mitigated the mold in the brand-new building, as of today's date, when I went back to the building, um, just in the one area for the building's, uh, manager, I took my shoe off and it was like standing in a puddle of water, a puddle of water. So this was as recent as a month or so ago. My concern at this point is that we spent so much money, we knew there were leak issues that have continued on, at what point did we not discuss going after the bond of any of these companies?
And I'm gonna defer that over to Derek Hopkins and.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so as Director Rogers indicated, um, in January is when, uh, Plan Design and Construction Division went into the Building Maintenance Department officially started. Prior to that, Marty Fox and I, along with our other duties, Assistant Director and Director, were working with quality control unofficially with the Splos PM to ensure that the county's best interests were in mind. Um, as we did that, we began in January one, full force, we took over, uh, we brought in three project managers, we have two currently. Um, Carol Clayton is our project manager who is assigned directly to the Flint River Community Center. To provide some additional context, what's happened in the past, um, since two thousand and four was the first Splos program, so you were definitely right, Commissioner, that we've had various firms that have done project management for the county. We recognize that those were not seeing the best interest for the county and so last year, this board had the courage to bring it internal. And so that's what we've been cleaning up and working on over the past nine months, um, these various issues, because what happened prior to me coming to the county was the project management firm would get the building built, turn it over to the Building Maintenance Department and then Building Maintenance would fix the issues. Still the same process, we're just keeping it internal so we're identifying those problems. The pro, the projects that we are currently managing were either in the very last phase, substantial completion was paid for or given and we had to move forward. And so at this point, between the punch items that were identified and given to the contractor at the end of the project, or warranty items that are existing, we're identifying how those problems existed. In the email I sent you previously, talking about the HVAC systems, that was our staff going through, even to the point of finding the mechanical engineer of record who worked with Nelson and saying, hey, here's your person, call them and find out what's going on. Carol Clayton made that connection based on the information that we got from Nelson and sent the contract. So we are doing the diligence to ensure that, to your point, the citizens of Clayton County are getting the best return on investment that we can possibly provide. Um, so the answer number four is, we took over on January first, that's our official date. Uh, moving forward, who's responsible for ensuring that all the outstanding issues, punch items on the build-out are complete for all of the Splos Florida River projects? That's me. I am ultimately, at the end of the day, I'm the guy who's going to be pulled here to the podium to speak to. Specific to that project, Carol Clayton is working directly with Morgan and Nelson and the other firms that are involved with it, either meeting subs that are showing up because Morgan's not, or meeting the consultants that Nelson is sending out because they're not. Everybody's saying, oh, in a COVID environment, we can't get people out. Well, we're there to make sure that Clayton County's assets are being protected and being delivered the way they should have been done. If Carol Clayton can't get a resolution, she has to base it to Marty Fox, my Assistant Director, who's one of those employees that's been here over twenty-five years. If he's having an issue, he has to base it to me. If I can't get a res- resolution, I have to base it to the COO. So there's a number, numerous layers that are ensuring that those things are getting, taken care of and protected. Many of them right now are taking longer than I like. Frankly, I would have liked to have said, six months after we took over, everything's done, we're done with the previous program, we're moving forward. Didn't happen that way. I, I can't tell you that I'm gonna be done with the things in two weeks because we asked for stuff before Labor Day and we didn't get the information, we called him, I called him when I was home last week. Oh, I'll get it to you on Friday. Got back to work on Monday, didn't happen. So we're gonna continue to follow up, we're gonna continue to do the information, we're providing our information, we're gonna come back when it's appropriate, we're gonna issue cure letters. Many of these firms, we've already finished the contract, so we're going after damages, the building is there, it's occupied, it's going. So it's difficult to then come back and say, yes, we have performance bonds, we're still holding on to those and some of those items, like the splash pad, the county went and got a vendor and got it corrected, got it taken care of, more to pay for. And we're giving them the opportunity so that they have to then pay for the things that we're doing, but we have to ask them and give them the opportunity to come and fix it. Um, so I think that would address the punch and warranty items.
And so.
Projected timeline, like I said, I would love to be able to tell you two weeks, Commissioner, but I just can't. Uh, we're going to do it as expeditiously as we can, as fully as we can to ensure that the citizens of Clayton County get what they're paid for.
Um, thank you so much for your response. As I said, even though this is pertain, these questions in line are pertaining to one particular project, the process applies to all projects.
That's right.
And, um, let me ask you one other question. Prior to you all taking over, who was the warm body in, on our staff responsible for ensuring that, uh, who we've contracted with, made sure that each one of those plans were signed off on, on any of our projects before you all took over? Cause we can't just leave it to, but somebody is a warm body in our county that has to look out for our interests. Who was responsible for that, just so we'll know moving forward?
CO is stepping in for us.
And even in proving the architectural design that I received information that was flawed?
Got it, so that would have been Atlas. Atlas is responsible with David, David Fisher. Who was considered the, the chief engineer. As of record, last would have been David Fisher. Prior to that would have been Greg.
Dixon.
Greg Dixon.
And they worked for Clayton County? So who worked for Clayton County to ensure this?
The contract specified program manager serves as the conduit for the county.
Okay.
They serve as the program management team for the county, they work on behalf of the county.
Okay. Uh, again, the reason I bring this up is because I do a lot of research and we have a jail that was hard, as you know, to be able to get bitted out and there's a reason because I asked every developer that either in the area that do work, I'm like, why can't we get somebody good? It's because we have these projects, we have issues and when you have the bond, if we don't go after the bond, when these issues first arrive, we're here where we are today, which leaves us as a government to put out good money with additional money that's already been spent to fix issues when there's a bonding process in place to ensure that these issues are mitigated. The jail in particular was one. The jail in particular was one that folks didn't want to touch with a ten-foot pole. So we need to keep that in consideration. Thank you for your presentation today and you've given me more than enough answers. Thank you.
Any board member have any questions? Well, thank you, Herina. I appreciate the presentation and we stand adjourned.